Twenty twenty one.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we have all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. Okay, we have a motion and second. At this time, counsel, are there any comments or discussion? Okay, if not, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you. And next, counsel proceeding on, we have a resolution in reference to the satisfaction of a special assessment on property located at five hundred seventh Avenue. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas, resolution number twenty fifteen dash one seventy, adopted on the seventh day of July twenty fifteen, affixed the cost for the demolition of an unsafe structure at five hundred seventh Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama, owner being Curtis Green. A special assessment was filed against the property taxes in the amount of five thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars eighty-one cent to be collected by the Russell County Revenue Commissioner. Said special assessment having been recorded in volume one oh four, page twenty-five, in the office of the Judge of Probate of Russell County. And whereas the full amount of nine thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars twenty-two cent, which is the five thousand six hundred thirty-one dollars eighty-one cent lien plus three thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars forty-one cent interest, was paid to the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, on September the third, twenty twenty-one, and said special assessment is entitled to be removed. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby constitute and appoint the Judge of Probate of Russell County, Alabama, as its true and lawful attorney for and in its name to enter in the margin of the records where said special assessment is reported. Full satisfaction thereof hereby ratifying and confirming any and all acts of said attorney in fact and about said premises. Be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Revenue Commissioner of Russell County to release said special assessment placed on property. Past proven and adopted this twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we have all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Day.
.................................... Sorry.
I preached Sunday, he liked to hear himself preach. He heard that in church, so.
Give him some ideas, man.
Yeah, you can.
That's wrong. We do have the motion and we do have a second, counsel. At this time, are there any comments or discussion? Okay, if not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, counsel proceeding on on administration, we have a resolution in reference to the satisfaction of a special assessment on property located at five twenty-seven Sixth Place. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas, resolution number twenty fifteen dash two sixty-three, adopted on the sixth day of October twenty fifteen, fixed the cost for the demolition of an unsafe structure at five twenty-seven Sixth Place, Phoenix City, Alabama, owner being Paul D. Wilson. A special assessment was filed against the property taxes in the amount of one thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars forty-four cent to be collected by the Russell County Revenue Commissioner. Said special assessment having been recorded in volume one oh five, page forty-four, in the office of the Judge of Probate of Russell County. And whereas the full amount of two thousand nine hundred fifty-six dollars and thirty cent, which is the one thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars forty-four cent for the lien, plus one thousand thirty-eight dollars eighty-six cent for the interest, was paid to the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, on June the eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and said special assessment is entitled to be removed. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby constitute and appoint the Judge of Probate of Russell County, Alabama, as its true and lawful attorney for and in its name to enter in the margin of the records where said special assessment is recorded. Full satisfaction thereof hereby ratifying and confirming any and all acts of said attorney in fact and and about said premises. Be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Revenue Commissioner of Russell County to release said special assessment placed on property. Past proven and adopted this twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
We have the motion by Mr. Day. May I have a second? Second, Mr. Day.
Gordy.
Gordy, I'm sorry. We have that, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have the motion and the second. Any comments or questions?
May I just have just one, if you may? If I may. Um, the interest on these, um, at what percent of interest is, uh, placed on tax liens, uh, for Russell County?
That's going to be.
Just for my knowledge.
Russell County Tax Assessment. And that's in the office.
Okay, so interest.
That's who controls that.
Okay. Who controls it?
We don't have any control over that.
And let's remember, it's been seven years, too.
Yeah, since twenty fifteen, so that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments or discussion, counsel? If not, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also proceeding on, counsel, we have a resolution in reference to rejecting all bids received for uniform. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas, the City of Phoenix City Finance Department received sealed bids for working of forms on August the eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. And whereas, two bids were received, and of the two submitted bids, one failed to provide a bid bond, and the other did not meet the specifications. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that all bids received for working of forms are hereby rejected and shall be rebid. Past proven and adopted this twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you so much, counsel. We've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion, Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Bailey?
Beat you to it off. Try.
Mrs. Lee, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, at this time, are there any discussions or comments? If not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, counsel, on the administration, we have a resolution in reference to budget transfers for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one fiscal financial year. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas, section six point oh seven of the City Charter of the City of Phoenix City provides for transfers of appropriations. And whereas, the City Manager may at any time during the last quarter of the fiscal year transfer any unencumbered appropriation balance or portion thereof between general classifications of expenditures within an office, department, board, or agency, subject to subdivision A to J inclusive to subsection two of section four point oh two of the City Manager Act of nineteen seventy-seven. And whereas, at the request of the City Manager and within the last three months of the budget year, the Council may by resolution transfer any unencumbered appropriation balance or portion thereof from one office, department, board, or agency, subject to subdivisions A to J inclusive of subsection two of section four point oh two. And whereas, no transfers shall be made from appropriations fixed by law or required by subsections A to I of section four point oh two. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the transfers for the attached schedules of appropriations be made. Past proven and adopted this twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you again, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Day.
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, any comments or discussion?
Yes, Mayor, yesterday, uh, we spoke about these dollars will be going back into the general treasury. Uh, I think with like five million, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars, eight hundred fifteen dollars, all this money will be going back into the general treasury.
On the, um, general fund, utilities to go back to utility funds, that portion. Four, four plus million over in general fund and one plus million to over in the utility funds.
Okay, they're separate, weren't they?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Day. Ms. Don, any other comments, discussion? If not, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Is everyone comfortable? It's not everybody's, no one's too hot. Okay, I don't see anyone making any, okay. Thank you. Proceeding on on the building department, counsel, we have four resolutions and public notices in reference to setting public years dates and fixing demolition costs associated with the following properties located in Phoenix City. Nineteen oh eight, Tenth Avenue, nineteen eleven, Tenth Avenue, twenty-one oh seven, Twelfth Avenue, and eight oh five, Sixteenth Avenue. Counsel, I will ask the clerk to read one master resolution, and I will call for the motion after she reads one master resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas, the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has been informed by the building official of the city that substandard structures at the following locations of Phoenix City were in need of demolition or removal. Nineteen oh eight, Tenth Avenue, nineteen eleven, Tenth Avenue, twenty-one oh seven, Twelfth Avenue, eight oh five, Sixteenth Street. Whereas, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has solicited sealed bids as required by Alabama law, and the apparent low bidders meeting the specifications required for the demolition of the substandard structures are as follows. The amount listed below includes dumping fees. Nineteen oh eight, Tenth Avenue, J and J Land Development Incorporated, five thousand two hundred dollars. Nineteen eleven, Tenth Avenue, J and J Land Development Incorporated, three thousand five hundred dollars. Twenty-one oh seven, Twelfth Avenue, J and J Land Development Incorporated, two thousand six hundred dollars. Eight oh five, Sixteenth Street, J and J Land Development Incorporated, two thousand eight hundred dollars. Whereas, the city is required by law to give notice by certified or registered mail to the person last assessed for ad-harm taxes before the final fixing of cost and a copy of the resolution is to be published in the Citizen of East Alabama, a newspaper of local and general publication in Russell County, Alabama. And whereas, the building official of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, was authorized to proceed with the demolition and or removal of the substandard structure with the apparent low bidder at the approved bid price. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, as follows. One, that the city clerk give notice by certified or registered mail to the person last assessed for ad-harm taxes, and a copy of this resolution be published in the Citizen of East Alabama newspaper one time before the final fixing of cost and establishment of a special assessment upon the property as required by law. Two, that the date for fixing of cost before the city council shall be October the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, at nine AM, in the Martin Ida Lauer Park Community Center or via platform Zoom. Three, that at such public hearing, any person interested in this property, as well as the person last assessed for ad-harm taxes, should appear and give reason, if any, why the city council should not establish a special assessment upon the property for the cost of the demolition or removal of the substandard structure, which the owner of the property had either failed or refused to do after it had become a public danger or health hazard. Four, the cost of demolition for each structure as listed above shall be levied against each property as a special assessment and shall constitute a lien against the property to be collected through the Revenue Commissioner's Office for Russell County, Alabama. The council notes that the parcel identification number for each property is listed on the public notice and the individual resolution for each property. Five, that the property owner has shown on the tax records of Russell County, Alabama, for each property is as follows. Nineteen oh eight, Tenth Avenue, Russell Taylor, nineteen oh eight, Tenth Avenue, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight six seven. Nineteen eleven, Tenth Avenue, Nicholas Austin, thirty-eight oh seven, U.S. Highway eighty West, Phoenix City, Alabama, three six eight seven oh. Twenty-one oh seven, Twelfth Avenue, Rodrick C. Hillion, P.O. Box eight ninety-four, Smith Station, Alabama, three six eight seven seven. Eight oh five, Sixteenth Street, Lily Evans, five ninety-seven, Chatty Grove Road, Hertz Borough, Alabama, three six eight six oh. The public notice reads as follows. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, will meet on October the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, at nine AM, in the Martin Ida Lauer Park Community Center, thirty-seven forty-three, Moonlight Drive, or via platform Zoom, to consider the fixing of cost incurred by the City of Phoenix City for the demolition and or removal of substandard buildings or structures at the following locations. Nineteen oh eight, Tenth Avenue, nineteen eleven, Tenth Avenue, twenty-one oh seven, Twelfth Avenue, eight oh five, Sixteenth Street. The legal description is listed on each individual public notice for that property. Any person from a corporation having any interest in the above described property should appear before council at the aforementioned time and place if they have any objections as to why the fixing of cost for the removal of the substandard building or structure should not be assessed as a lien against the property taxes upon which the substandard building or structure was located. This the twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Catch your breath. Drink you a little water.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the master resolution as well as the public notice. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Councilman Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Okay, you all right, Mel? Can you call for the vote?
Oh, yes, sir, I'm good.
Get your breath.
Ready?
Yes.
Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, counsel proceeding on on the Finance Department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and the city manager to accept their proposal from Trust, Truist Bank, known as Branch Banking and Trust Company, to finance the CCTV inspection system with IBK lateral launch at an interest rate of one point three nine percent, three, four percent, excuse me, that's one point three four percent. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama Utility Department, has need to lease purchase a mainline CCTV inspection system with IBK lateral launch. And whereas, the city has received proposals from NCL Government Capital Signature Public Funding Corporation and Truist Bank, Branch Banking and Trust Company. And whereas, Signature Public Funding Corporation and Truist Bank, Bank Banking, Branch Banking and Trust Company, presented the lowest proposals of one point two six percent interest with a five hundred dollar document fee and one point three four percent interest, respectfully resulting in less than a one percent difference in the total debt repayments for a five-year lease purchase term. And whereas, the city's purchasing guidelines allows for a three percent preference to vendors with local presence. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the mayor and city manager to accept the proposal from Truist Bank, Branch Banking and Trust Company, and to sign a lease purchase agreement to finance the CCTV inspection system with IBK lateral launch at an interest rate of one point three four percent. Past proven and adopted this twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes.
Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Councilwoman Johnson, may I have a second?
Second.
Counsel, Mr. Day? We have the motion and the second. Counsel, are there any comments or discussion?
What, what does this do? I mean, what is this? How?
You want to explain it, John?
Yeah, I mean, I have, I mean, I know it's for the utility department, but I don't. I know I'm ignorant, but I'm just trying to learn.
Yes, that camera system, uh, it will televise main lines down to a six inch motor, uh, can televise larger lines. It also has that lateral launcher as a camera that it can set up service lines off the main.
But you can run it in the pipes out there to find the problems and the, and the storm water coming into sewer line, things like that.
That's correct, sir.
Yes, sir.
This is what they call it, and it grabs the rock just around the right. You know, we had other ones, we had, and it can operate, and there's this new version of it, that gives them a good shot.
All right, this just does it easier and better.
It, yeah, our current system is about eleven years old, and it does not have a way to send camera up the service lines itself. It's just able to televise. We can't right now really televise a six inch clay line because it's too, too narrow for the camera. But this new system will be able to televise those lines and the laterals also.
All right. Thank you.
So, when you put this camera in, it can tell what calls the leak in the black and stuff like that, and whatever.
See it all, I guess.
You'll, you'll be able to see cracks or roots or.
Save a lot of time. Would save you time, and you don't have to tap as much streets and sidewalks and lanes. Sometimes trying to locate something to see if you can find it, it's less intrusive to the damage that's done, trying to repair something. That's good.
What's that, Ms. Don?
You can locate the section where the damage is done.
Right.
Or the naps or the breakage. And like I say, photograph, and John is engineer, that's over there in the utility, so he's able to go back and do his constructive work from there with the crews on the outside.
Well, I was gonna say, you can have a water leak somewhere, and the water might bubble up here, but the leak's actually over there, it comes up over here, and you don't want to have to be digging up with a large section trying to find it.
That's, that's correct. And we have a, um, older system throughout the city, so a lot of places when they're making their plans to replace so many linear feet per year, they can use these in different areas where they have to replace this ass.
Well, you can see how maybe something can wait a little while to be repaired versus an emergency repair.
That's correct.
Which makes it easier, too. So that, uh, you know, not that all of it doesn't need repairing, it does, but sometime one is more critical than another. And that would help us, I'm sure, in that.
It's important to save money and time.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other comments, discussion, or question, counsel? All right, if not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, counsel proceeding on the Finance Department, is a resolution in reference to rescinding resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one seven nine in reference to the lease purchase agreement with Truist Bank, also Branch Banking and Trust, for the Public Works Department. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas, in resolution twenty twenty-one dash one seventy-nine, the City Council authorized the mayor and city manager to sign a lease purchase agreement and accept the proposal from Branch Banking and Trust Company, now Truist Bank, to finance the equipment for the Public Works Department for five hundred forty-four thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars forty-four cents at a one point three four percent interest rate for a five-year lease purchase term. And whereas, equipment purchases were made more than sixty days in advance of the financing agreement. And whereas, Internal Revenue Service requires reimbursement of the expenditures within sixty days after the payment of the original expenditures. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby rescinds resolution twenty twenty-one dash one seventy-nine to finance equipment for the Public Works Department with Truist Bank for five hundred forty-four thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars forty-four cents at a one point three four percent interest rate for a five-year lease term. Past proven and adopted this twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Mr. Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gordy. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Okay, if not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now proceeding on, counsel, on the Police Department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager and chief of police to enter into an agreement for the administration of grant funds through the SEARHSO dash ESCC Community Traffic Safety Program from October the first, twenty twenty-one, through September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas, the Phoenix City Police Department wishes to participate in the Southeast Region Community Traffic Safety Program and has been awarded grant funds to participate in the program beginning October the first, twenty twenty-one, through September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas, said funds are provided by ADECA and are administered through the Southeast Alabama Regional Highway Safety Office Enterprise State Community College and shall be used to pay for overtime and traffic enforcement cost. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city managers, authorizing officials, and Raven J. Smith as chief of police, are hereby authorized and directed to enter into an agreement for the administration of SEARHSO dash ESCC Community Traffic Safety Program funds for the October the first, twenty twenty-one, through September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two funding period. Past proven and adopted this twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, you okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Counsel, we've heard the reading of this resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson?
Thank you.
Any comments or discussion, counsel? If not, Mrs. Lee, call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, also on the Police Department, is a resolution in reference to decline of property and evidence surplus to be sold to the highest bidder at a public auction. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas, the Police Department of the City of Phoenix City has several items which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas Section eleven forty-three fifty-six of Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five, as amended, authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the attached list of described property and evidence is hereby declared surplus to be sold to the highest bidder at a public auction. Passed, approved, and adopted this twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Counsel, we have also heard the reading of that resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, let's counsel and day. Okay, we have the motion and the second. Counsel, are there any comments or discussion?
And these are the ones we talked about the other day about weapons and all.
Yeah.
Can we get the chief to explain what we do? Kind of like what Robert did at work session yesterday, to think that these weapons could pack out on the street. They do not.
Yeah, counsel and mayor, what is the, every so often, we have to do house cleaning in the evidence room, and so as cases are disposed of, we take the property that nobody has claimed or either the courts have condemned, and we take what is sellable and we'll put that on auction and sell it in the open market. Things that are not sellable, like recovered drugs, those kind of things, they'll be destroyed. The next agenda item, we'll talk about that. And if the items are not usable at all and they're not drugs, they can just be thrown in the landfill, and we'll dispose of those items in the landfill. So those two orders do that together. But that includes anything from cell phones to bicycles to firearms. And firearms are, of course, a special circumstance as well. Firearms have to be sold to federally licensed firearms dealers, so they go back into the system to the ATS, so it's just like they're, you know, manufactured again. They can't be sold to individuals, they have to be sold to a firearm license. So even though there's a whole list of items, each one of those items has a special circumstance about how they get disposed of. Some get disposed of through a federal license, some get disposed of through just a normal sale to a private citizen. And by the way, another question that came up is how do we sell those? They're through gov deals, it's on the internet. A lot of cities, municipalities throughout the country use gov deals. So when we get the inventory completed and the council approves us to sell those items, they'll be placed on gov deals. Any proceeds that we get from the sale of any items, they go back to the general fund to help fund the city.
And then chief, explain also how, after we follow that thorough process, how they can sometimes steal one back up on the street.
Well, certainly, you know, baseball bats, for example, if we've got a baseball bat in inventory, that baseball bat's going to be sold, and if a private citizen uses it illegally, that's going to be the private citizen involved's responsibility. So there are some controversies with that, but certainly, the biggest point is, and we brought this up yesterday, firearms that are sold by licensed firearms dealers are not the problem. Firearms that are sold to individuals who don't secure them, whether they don't secure them in their house, or they don't secure them in their car, and they get stolen, criminals can't buy legal firearms. Criminals steal firearms, and if we make sure that we secure the firearms that are legally bought, legally purchased in this country, we'd be a long way. Very, very few legally owned firearms are used in crimes. Almost all that I've come across in my career have been stolen or purchased illegally.
Okay.
Chief, let me ask you this question, regardless, especially on the firearms, regardless of what it can, I bet the security number remains the same, is that right? It doesn't ever change?
Yes, so firearms, firearms have to, if you don't have a serial number on a firearm, that's a federal offense on it in and on itself unless it was produced prior to nineteen sixty-eight. All these firearms that I've got all have serial numbers, and if they're prior to nineteen sixty-eight, those are considered relics and typically very antique. We don't have any of those in the inventory. Ones we have all have serial numbers. If they don't have serial numbers, they have to be destroyed. That's a good point. We won't be able to sell those because that's an offense in and of itself to own a firearm without a serial number.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Question, counsel? At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Ms. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mary Lloyd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also proceeding on on the Police Department, we have a resolution in reference to decline of property and evidence surplus to be disposed of at the landfill or destruction at the Phoenix City Police Department Training Facility. Ms. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas the Police Department of the City of Phoenix City has several items which are no longer needed for public or municipal purposes. And whereas Section eleven forty-three fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five, as amended, authorizes the municipal governing body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the attached list of described property and evidence is hereby declared surplus to be disposed of at the landfill or destruction at the Phoenix City Police Department Training Facility. Passed, approved, and adopted this twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Mr. Daye. This is second, Mr. Gordy. We have a motion and a second. Counsel, are there any comments or discussion? Okay, Ms. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mary Lloyd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And counsel proceeding on on the Utilities Department, we have a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor, the city manager, and utilities director to sign an agreement with Cedar Chem LLC to extend the current contract for zinc ortho phosphate through September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City Council has solicited sale bids as required under Alabama bid law. And whereas on October the sixth, twenty twenty, per Resolution Twenty Twenty Dash Two Sixty-Five, Cedar Chem LLC was awarded the bid for zinc ortho phosphate. And whereas the contract may be extended in one-year increments for a maximum of three years upon written agreement of both parties. And whereas the city and Cedar Chem LLC wish to extend the current contract through September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes and directs the mayor and city manager and utilities director to sign the written agreement to extend the current contract for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year with Cedar Chem LLC for zinc ortho phosphate. Passed, approved, and adopted this twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, that's a motion by Mr. Daye, and that's a second, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or discussion?
Yeah, I think that's this question. Mr. Hunt, it's like pandemic hitters, and the contract was signed prior to all of that. Can that company change that contract?
Not as long as it's agreed upon, both parties, but this is one of the...
But the prices changed?
Yes, sir, but as you can see, it's just one of the points that could be extended from certain depth, which we signed, which I commend this company, because a lot of companies are not doing at this point in time. There are, some of our prices have tripled because of a lot of people out there didn't have to get the supplies or equipment that they need, but this company has stuck with us, but still, we've had some increases in some of the prices as you will see going forward. But I commend, I commend the company for agreeing to go another year and extend this because most of the contracts to be signed have that extension placed upon.
But these chemicals, which we used into wastewater treatment, we've been proactive. We got some last, what, six months or eight months?
Most of them, some that, as much as we can get, we've been able to stock, but you know, you have to, you have to be careful with stocking chemicals, it's dangerous. So we only could go so far with certain amount of it, where we house that and hold that in certain areas, but we have, they have been very proactive in making sure we have stuff that's necessary to treat our water, whether it's our water, whether it's our wastewater.
Thank you, chief. Okay, thank you, Mr. Daye, Mr. Dunn. Any other comments or discussion?
Is this like the second year of this contract?
Yes, sir. If you go back there, it shows, they got started in two thousand one, they're running for thirty years. So like I said, I've been talking to you all about what we are seeing going throughout the nation as far as people making people re-bid because they're increasing so much.
Right.
So we have a company that sticks with their original contracts and work that's out. That's, that's good because, like I said, as you'll see going forward, you won't see that with a lot of it. Right now, we have a lot more in this country right now.
They're going to pull away to get out of the contract rather than get forward on.
And it's because the increase, because the demand in supplies on the nation, and a lot of people are trying to get things, it's been pretty tough.
And you have an excuse.
Good so far, but it's challenging now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Daye. All right, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Ms. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mary Lloyd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, counsel, on the Utilities Department, we have resolutions in reference to awarding bids for chemicals to the following companies. Aluminum sulfate, dry CNS chemicals, point one five nine per pound, dry polymer, Cedar Chem LLC, two dollars and seven cents a pound. Granular soda ash, Harcross Chemical Incorporated, point one seven three nine per pound. Hydrofluoric silic acid, Hero's Harcross, Harcross, got to come see you, Britton. Harcross Chemical Incorporated, point nine one three zero four dry pound. Liquid chlorine, Brent Tag Mid-South Incorporated, one dollars forty-four cents per ton. Liquid polymer, Bridge Tag Mid-South Incorporated, one dollar and forty cents a pound. Polyaluminum chloride, Cedar Chem LLC, point two one eight per pound. And sulfur dioxide, Brent Tag Mid-South Incorporated, one dollar, one dollar and ten cents per ton. At this time, counsel, I will ask the clerk to read the master resolution, and we'll take them all in one vote, okay?
Okay.
Ms. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council has solicited sale bids as required under the Alabama bid law. And whereas the lowest responsible bidders meeting the specifications for chemicals used at the water filtration and wastewater treatment plants, or aluminum sulfate, CNS chemicals, zero point one five nine per dry pound. Dry polymer, Cedar Chem LLC, two point zero seven per pound. Granular soda ash, Harcross Chemical Incorporated, zero point one seven three nine per dry pound. Hydrofluoric silic acid, Harcross Chemical Incorporated, zero point nine one three zero four per dry pound. Liquid chlorine, CL2, Brent Tag Mid-South Incorporated, one thousand four hundred forty dollars per ton. Liquid polymer, Brent Tag Mid-South Incorporated, one dollar forty cent per pound. Polyaluminum chloride, Cedar Chem LLC, zero point two one eight per pound. Sulfur dioxide, Brent Tag Mid-South Incorporated, one thousand one hundred dollars per ton.
Thank you for correcting that. I need to see, come see you, Britton. That's a come instead of a die, period. Thank you.
Yeah.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept the lowest responsible bids from these companies noted above, providing they meet our specifications and authorizes the Utilities Department to purchase said chemicals at the above listed pricing through September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Passed, approved, and adopted this twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Lee. Counsel, we've heard the reading of the master resolution. At this time, may I call for a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Councilman Gordy. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, the counsel and day. Comments or discussion, counsel? All right, thank you, Ms. Lee, for correcting me.
She's wearing these glasses, she's on winter season.
Britton been on me, I have to admit that. Thank you. With that said, I'd like to call for the vote. Ms. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mary Lloyd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, counsel, on the ordinance. We have a public hearing and second reading. It's an ordinance to rezone zero point six second acre tract of land located at forty-one oh four. Some of it eroded from an R one zone to a C three zone. Johnny Burrell, owner. The first reading, counsel, was on the August the seventeenth of this year. I will not ask the clerk to reread. However, at this time, it's time to call for a public hearing, and if there's anyone that would love to come and address the council, this is the time to do so. And when you do, please state your name and your address.
Good evening, mayor and councilman. I'm Johnny Burrell. Johnny Burrell, the owner. My address is one eleven Link Road, six oh five. I'm here to request that you approve my petition to change the zoning from an R one to a C three. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. I'm not sure if you've heard it or not, and I'd like to correct it. This is not going to be a Japanese massage parlor. It's not going to be a massage parlor. My daughter is a licensed occupational therapist with over twenty years of medical experience. She has a certification as a personal trainer. She has a certification as a health code. She is a licensed massage therapist. She wants to bring all this expertise, knowledge, to help the people here in Phoenix City to be able to move and not have to deal with some of the, what we call minor aches and pains. She wants to bridge that gap between modern healthcare, which, if you go to a surgeon, he's going to recommend surgery. If you go to a holistic healthcare individual, he's going to recommend something else. My daughter has the experience, the knowledge, and the abilities to evaluate, and if you do need that surgeon, she knows to send you to it. If you need, if you don't need anything, she knows that also. But she does work some outstanding things for individuals that relieves some issues they have. And the best way I can do it is provide, she does it by providing a fusion of soft tissue mobilization and corrective exercises. I, we're in this zone in your master plan, the corridor, that says this should be a mixed residential and commercial. My piece of property is contingent to a commercial piece of property. There's a lot of different reasons why it was put there, but it is there. It is in fact, it is there, I'm contingent to it. So that's the reason why I'm asking for this approval for the rezone. There has been some discussion about traffic issues and stuff. The way she's going to do it is, she's one person, she does by appointment only, and therefore, if there is any traffic input or impact to it, it's going to be one or two cars more than if it's a residential property and a family's living there. I kind of see this as the difference between two visions. One, the status quo, let's turn the clocks back, no progress. I see the other as is explained in your plan, this city master's plan, that basically says that we may have a public and private sector must share a vision that can minimize the potential, potential adverse effects and increase likelihood of highly qualified, compatible development. I contend that this is the perfect fit for here. The exterior of the house is not going to be changed. You won't even know that it's a business except for a small sign which will be out front to identify it. There's other concerns about whether other people will zone or try to change their zoning. I don't know if that'll happen. I don't know of anybody that knows if it will happen. I do know, having gone through this process, that it is an extremely refining process, that we come to you with a plan, you know exactly what we want to do. You can see how it's going to impact the community. It's going to be a benefit to the community. It's not going to be a detriment to it. It's not going to invade any of the neighbors or anything. And we would like the opportunity to do that. The only way we can do that is if you vote for approval of this rezoning. So I request that you please vote for us. Are there any questions?
I have one, Mr. Burrell.
Yes, ma'am.
Being the property owner, have you ever lived at that property?
I've never lived at that property. I've lived, it's in Somerville for a number of years. I've lived on Twenty-Sixth Street. I spent twenty-five years in the military, the United States Coast Guard, where when I retired, I came back. My home is originally Columbus. I was issued out at Fort Benin, but I decided to come to Phoenix City because I thought Phoenix City had something to offer to me, and it does. I still believe in that. Regardless of what comes out tonight, I believe Phoenix City has something to offer me. But I've been here now twenty, going on twenty-one years. No, I take it back, I'm sorry, twenty-four years. Hard to believe I've been retired that long.
And if I ask a question and you're not comfortable answering, it's because I, I don't want to offend you, first of all, but being the property owner, how long have you owned the property? How did you acquire the property? If that's the right thing to ask.
Right. The way, way, way this came about is, my daughter does not have the financial means to purchase that piece of property, so she wanted to open her business. So as any good father would do, I have the ability to purchase that piece of property and to pay for it and to get it so that she can open her business. The hope, and I think it will come to that, is that she is going to do so well and that the community is going to see such a need for it, that she, somewhere along the process, will be able to assume that piece of property from me, whether it's through inheritance or any other manner. But that's the reason why I purchased it, was because she financially could not afford it at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Burrell.
Any other questions?
Yeah, when you purchased the property, you had this in, this idea in mind?
Yes, sir, and so I checked into some things. I did, saw the master plan, and said, because I was contingent, contiguous to the property that I qualified to request that it be rezoned, and so I went forward with the idea that since your plan, your zoning, and what I could find out at the time, would allow me to request this rezoning, I went ahead and purchased the property in hopes that it would be rezoned. And again, I see, I only see positive from this. The community is going to benefit from having that type of services here in the local area instead of having to go somewhere else. Her type of services, she's worked on military members when she was out at Fort Benin, she's worked on student athletes. She focuses mostly on female athletes, that's where she wants to be. She prevents injuries, she teaches them how to exercise, how to do it, what needs to be done to maximize their potential without injuring themselves. And we have so many, especially women, athletes, high school level and college level, that injure themselves and are not allowed to seek their potential. And she just wants to be that mediary between that and keeping them from getting hurt so they do maximize their potential. Any other questions?
Mr. Burrell, I do want to thank you for coming up and addressing the council, but I do want to say this, that the thing that was said that disturbed me the most in being very honest and candidly, being Japanese should not have anything to do with this. And let me finish. And if people are saying that, it's a disgrace because Phoenix City is better than that.[1766.52]
And if people are saying that, it's a disgrace because Phoenix City is better than that. So I haven't heard, I can't say about anybody else, but you know, we are much better than there. And if people are saying that to get what they want, whichever way it goes, it's wrong.
Yes, sir. And we don't hold the city.
No, I'm speaking to the community.
Yes, sir.
We are better than that. And it's wrong, and we need to stop that. Okay? I just need to say. The Phoenix City, the citizen people in this community is better than that. It's about people, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. And that's what she wants to do, is help the people of Phoenix City.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow. Okay, so please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Julia McDonald. I live at 21 Cedar Ridge Drive in Forkston, Georgia. Thank you. It's been a while since I've had a captive audience older than my three-year-old, so excuse me if I stumble around a little bit. I'm a client of Sheri's, a client of my own, and I just want to kind of enlighten some of the opposition to what she does because it is very unique and very much needed. I wish I had had her in my life many, many years prior to this. So let me give you a little bit of my background. Before focusing on raising my family, I was a special agent for Homeland Security Investigations. In doing so, I was instructor, and I taught defensive tactics and firearms. Both of those are very physically demanding roles. And in addition to having my own personal fitness regime, I can tell you that I was in pain a lot. I suffered from chronic headaches, from inflammation in my shoulders and neck. I was having to take over-the-counter medication almost every day for relief. It hurts. It hurt a lot. But I got through it, pushed through it, and fast forward to three years ago, when I left my career and I started my family, I thought that not having such a physically demanding job, my body would actually be able to heal and I would finally have some relaxation. However, when you're nursing babies and you're contorting your body to hip hold them all day long, that comes along with its own form of painful demands. And I found myself again daily in pain. I've gone to chiropractors. I have gone to doctors. I have gone to other massage therapists. I have gone to acupuncturists. If it's out there, I went to it. And it wasn't until I saw Sheri that I finally experienced long-term relief from my pain. She was able to use multiple disciplines to ease my inflammation. Her father just spoke to those disciplines. She does mild fascial release, which many people aren't aware of. It's an amazing thing, and it's not painful to experience. It's not that deep tissue, get in there and just grin and bear it. There's no pain with it, and it is very effective. So I was finally able to go long-term without pain, not taking over-the-counter every day. I rarely have to take it. Normally, it's my three-year-old that's giving me the headache now. So I saw her four times, four times only, in long-term relief. Recently, I saw Sheri again because I had some lower back pain that was interrupting my sleep. I thought it was because I had a renewed passion for running, and I went to see her. She noticed just from looking at me that my left hip was being pulled by my right arm. This is just by looking at me. And I started talking to her, and I said that I started naming for a Goliath baby. He is 25 pounds, at nine months old. He's a lot to hold on to. And when I hold him, I anchor him with my wrist, which puts a lot of pressure on my bicep. And I had an adhesion in my bicep that was causing my pain, that almost like purple tunnel syndrome, and it was getting very, very painful. So what I thought was a hip issue was actually a bicep issue. And that's something that a normal massage therapist wouldn't even look at, wouldn't even touch, would not even notice. She released adhesion in my bicep, and I was pain-free that day. So this is just, it's not unique to what she does. This is not a unique story. Sheri has worked with some of our strongest and finest in the US, United States Army to ensure injury prevention and maximum performance. She assists my husband and his team of special agents that work out at Fort Benning to have injury prevention and to help them get through their aches and pains so they can, you know, serve our community better. She helped my father find pain relief when he was suffering from a broken rib that did not heal properly. I plan to have Sheri work on my three-year-old who broke his leg and has some mobility issues from being healing in the caps. That's three generations that this woman is going to have an effect on with no, with no need for insurance, copays, having to see a pediatric physical therapist that's going to cost me an arm and a leg. Furthermore, I know that there's probably many of you in this very room that suffer with daily pain. And I would just like to note that over 60% of people that are in long-term assisted living facilities are there due to mobility issues, not because they can't. Think right, okay? So wouldn't it be nice to have somebody in your community that was there to help you and get you to live the longest, most fulfilling life you can? Her mission is to heal. It's not relaxation. It's to heal. It's to make your whole body better. Her business is legitimate, and it's much needed in a time where painkillers are being prescribed hand over foot, and we have addiction issues that are skyrocketing. I jokingly say that Sheri has magic hands, however, and honestly, I say that she has a gift from God. And I hope that you allow her to share this gift with the community. A side note, I was in the very seat of many of you in opposition to this today. I was, I lived in a neighborhood that had a plot of farmland that bordered us, and it was a great place to run the dogs and have the kids play. It was up for rezoning, and a church was selling it, and there was an assisted living facility that wanted to go in there. And we fought it tooth and nail. And we won that battle, but we lost the war because what went in there was a monstrosity far worse than that assisted living facility. And that assisted living facility went up five miles up the road, aesthetically pleasing, not a huge footprint, but instead, we lost all the trees and everything. All those promises that the contractor said he would take care of, just broken. So I just caution you guys to just keep in mind that you know what you're getting with this business. And I thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Only question I've got. You said you've been going to and you go to and where? Does she have an office that you go to, or is she mobile?
At this time, she is mobile before I did go to the facility that she was working out of.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions, Council? Thank you so much.
I would like to share briefly. My name is Robert Goodman, resident here. First, I'd like to say, I think that's a business I would like to go to, probably some pain that she could help me with. But I really don't think that this would even be a discussion if this was taking place a half mile down the road. I think it's happening because it's next to a piece of commercial property that was put there under hardship condition, and I think we're all aware of that. When their property was taken, it was a special exemption to put her into that residential area. And it's stayed that way for all these years. And I think that there's plenty of places that this business could go in town, even right over here next to the Piggly Wiggly, there's an opening there. Down Somerville Road, there's some commercial property for sale also. I'm not against the business at all. I think it sounds great, that a lot of people could use. But I think that we need to set a precedent tonight that says that this area of Somerville Road is going to be preserved as residential. Once that door's open, and I know it might not matter to many, but once the commercial door is open, just because this piece is touching the other commercial, we have to remember it was there because of a hardship. And once it's opened, you know, there'll be no more residential right there. And that whole area will be commercial before too much time. So I think it's important that we preserve it as residential. I drive up and down that road every day. Others drive up and down that road every day. And it's not just that this one business. And I don't know anyone else's opinion and just my own, that I'm not against the business. You know, in fact, I think it sounds great. But I'm just against it being in that place, this residential.
Any other questions, Council?
I'm sorry, I didn't read your address.
2208 45th Street.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
My name is Dr. Joshua Eldridge, and 150 Village Parkway in Waverly Hall, Georgia. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting us speak. And I just want to say thank you as well for the information that you put out earlier because I was disgusted by some of those rumors that I heard as well, what people were saying. So I appreciate that you stepped up and put an end to that, I hope. And I hope that, I feel that our communities are linked together, and to hear that coming out of any community is disgusting. So I appreciate personally that you said that, so thank you. I am a coworker, I was a coworker of Sheri, and we both worked out at Fort Benning together. And I just wanted to give you some of her credentials and what she's capable of. I've always said, and I believe, that Sheri is the best provider that's ever been out at Fort Benning, Georgia. So by far, when we lost her, we lost a big part of taking care of soldiers. And it was devastating to me to see her leave. Sheri has worked with, in 2016, we were both able to work with the best ranger competition soldiers, and the team that she worked with was one of the winners. So she has a very, very high level of skill, and she's sought after by many of our soldiers and special operations personnel. So from that, as a provider, I not only would currently, but I did in the past and I will in the future, I would refer patients to her, and I would happily do that because I feel she has much greater skill than I do. And she is a fantastic provider, and any community, any neighborhood should be excited to have her in their vicinity as part of their community. So I just wanted to say that personally. I think that she is by far one of the best providers that you'll have in Phoenix City. And she is, she is, like I said, the most capable provider that you'll have. So if there's any questions for me, I really appreciate y'all taking the time, and Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what you said as well.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Council?
Hi, my name is Kathy Weaver, and my address is 2507 Brookwood Circle, Phoenix City. Sheri is a former student. I was a 35-year educator in Phoenix City, 2510, in Muskogee County as an educator slash library media specialist. And Sheri is one of the finest students I've ever come across at Central High School. The other aspect I want to talk about is I'm a North Phoenix City historian, I guess. My hard-working, brick-layer daddy built a house on 46th Street in the 50s. We used to ride our bikes down Somerville Road to the Piggly Wiggly. And yes, it's changed. And you know, there wasn't as much traffic as it is now. And the other thing is that there was a business in the 70s right across from there called Candlewood Nursery. It was run by Mary Nell Hughley. And it went away, and that whole, I know that the gentleman said it would all turn commercial, but that was years ago, and it didn't really turn all the way commercial. And myself and a member of my family would benefit from Sheri's business. I am fortunate to have Alabama Insurance as a retiree, and we have silver sneakers. I've always been, have been a member of the YMCA since the 80s. My membership is now free. And walking has helped me, it helps me every day. It helps me move. We're a family with no children and not doing any falls for our own. But I know that at some point, you know, as I'm 67, I know that I'm going to have to, you know, be taking care of ourselves, and I want to stay strong. My husband has injuries from seizures, has spinal stenosis, he has compression fracture. And I believe he would benefit from Sheri's services because as we know, the opioid epidemic is horrible in this country. And I know y'all probably have had people that have touched your life that have been on these painkillers. And if this would get folks off of painkillers and get them to move, then I say amen to that. And I just want to speak up for Sheri because I know whatever she goes there will be excellent. It will be a business of excellence, and it will benefit our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Council? Thank you so much, Eric.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Hammrich. I live at 98 Lee Road, 318. I'm right at the road by Glenwood School. I've known Sheri since high school. We did graduate together from Central, and both went through the Health Occupations Program The location that Sheri has chosen is really a very ideal location. It's easy to get to. It's near the highway. I'm a nurse. I work at the John D. Amis Center. I'm an oncology nurse over there in Columbus. And I know I encounter patients all the time who would benefit from her services. A lot of these patients would be driving in from Columbus, from Harris County. We get patients all the time from all over this area, from throughout Georgia and Alabama. Having convenience, being able to find it easily and be able to get there, especially when they're not necessarily here in Phoenix City automatically, it would make it so much easier for them to find her facility to get care. We don't have anything like what she's offering. There isn't an office that does what she's doing over in Columbus as part of Piedmont, part of St. Francis. It's just not there. You can find some of these services individually, an occupational therapist, a physical therapist, massage therapist. You can find them separately, but to find a whole body system like what she can offer to people who need her services, this is really an excellent opportunity. And for us to have that chance to put that here in our area and have people coming here to get her services, that's really great for us. Opening up this area to allow her to open her business right there, it's growth. It's a good thing. Shutting it out, you know, you don't know what's going to happen to that property down the road, but this is a good opportunity, something that can help make this get better. And that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Any questions, Council? Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Good evening, I should say, Council.
Move the mic down.
Is that better? All right. So I'm Sheri. I am the occupational therapist, massage therapist that's wanting to open this business. It has been a passion of mine. It has been something that the years I've been working towards, started out in the Health Occupations class.
Just take it to the mic.
Yeah, at the Health Occupations class at Central, I started the healthcare career there. And so this has been building and growing. And as I decided to open a business, I looked at different places and different communities and prayed over it, you know, what was best, what was right. And honestly, my children attend school here. That location is more than just convenient. It's something that I can still be involved with my children, and I can also run to the clinic and help someone that needs help, and then go back and be with my children. The other thing about the location is that it offers me the opportunity to not only have the massage studio, a room where I can actually do the soft tissue work, but it allows me the opportunity to have a room where I can do the corrective movements. And that's unique to my business, and that can't be found everywhere. And there are a lot of places that the space design or setup is not conducive to that. And so that's another reason why that's a great location in terms of the way that the home is set up. When I was researching about where to have a business, I read the Phoenix City Comprehensive Plan. I read the zoning instructions, you know, and it says in the zoning paperwork, for a neighborhood commercial district, the purpose of this district is to encourage and allow relatively small-scale convenience, retail, service, office, and similar activities that serve people and businesses at the neighborhood and community level. So that's in the zoning ordinance. So that in and of itself made me feel hopeful. But then, reading in the Comprehensive Plan, the very first page, which the Comprehensive Plan is on the planning commission main webpage. So as a new business looking to find out information about what I should do, where I need to go, what the process is, I see the Comprehensive Plan. And the first thing, it says, "Goals and Vision. The city is a place where all residents can enjoy an excellent quality of life and have a strong sense of local pride and identity." And that got me excited because I am from here. I didn't grow up here, but my grandparents were here. So every year, as a military brat, this was the constant. Came home. Came home for Christmas or Thanksgiving. And so I knew the community, I just didn't grow up in it. But I have been here since my junior year of high school. You know, to address some of the concerns that were brought up, though, people are expressing that they're concerned that if it goes commercial, that something else could go commercial. But when I was reading the plan, it says that the corridor, which that is, they, the plan envisions that, that we're going to have mixed commercial and residential. And so to me, I feel like if the plan already said this is the direction that we're heading, why is the debate on my business, if nobody has a problem with my business, why is the debate about whether that can be done in commercial or not, when in the plan, it says that we're going to do residential and commercial? And to me, I'm that small business that still looks residential. And I'm still gonna be the neighbor. If you need something, I'm gonna be there like a neighbor. I'm not a box store. And I understand that there's concern, but based on the plan, that was already in place before I even sought to have a business there. And so I think that that's just, you know, as new businesses look to our community, you know, we're looking at the vision that has been shared. And so for me, that's when I got excited and hopeful, you know, to be part of the community. And I do want to give back. I've served almost 20 years on the Career Technical Council and Executive Board, because I believe in this community, and I believe in the future and the children that are coming out. So the community service doesn't start because having business. It's already been there. And I just want to grow. I want to be a part of the community. I want to give back to the community. And I want to help the citizens get better, feel better, move better. You know, if we can move better, we can live better. And we can all maximize our potential. And so I just, tonight, just, you know, bring up also the fact that people have mentioned, well, you're mobile. I can't continue mobile. That's not conducive to the type of work that I'm offering. That's like asking me to offer 20% of what I'm capable of. If I don't have the movements to do, if I don't have the space to work with all my tools, it's like my hands are behind my back. And so to maximize my benefit, I do need a facility to go to. And so I just hope that you guys will take that into consideration. There's been a lot of support online. As I've shared information, more people have gotten excited. And so I encourage you that as you think about our city in the future, that you will take that into consideration, that there is a lot of support for it. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
I'm sorry, I didn't get your address.
Oh, sorry, I didn't get it. 2415 Cantor Drive.
Don't have exact questions, a couple of comments. I understand, you know, you need for a business, any one business in that area, what was stated earlier about other things in that area up there would be available. No matter where you go in, it would be my opinion that you would have to do some work, either on that house to get it exactly the way you'd want it to be set up, or if you went into an office, say, over by Piggly Wiggly, or by Publix, or whatever, you'd have to do some setting up. I've always been used to anybody that goes into a business anywhere, goes into this room here, wants to turn it into a restaurant, there's gonna be stuff that has to be done to turn it into that for you. So I can understand the proximity of wanting to have something that you eventually can own. And I do understand it, because I own my own business. And I applaud you for wanting to own your own small business. And I know if you're renting over here, that you can't own that. You're just gonna be rented. And if you can get that up there, you will own it one day. As I got mine from my father, the same way that your father is trying to do with you, so I applaud you for that. The other thing is, it's been brought up a couple of times, the plan that the city has. What year was that plan done? Anybody know?
214. As far as we want to talk about Comprehensive Plan, it's 214.
Okay.
That suggests that was it.
My point to the Comprehensive Plan is, I do understand some of the road and the theory of some of the road. But River Chase Drive, where it's located now, would be now, the way I would consider, that most people go to North Phoenix City. Very few people, as I think anyway, because I see the traffic on both roads, use, say, from the Piggly Wiggly here, north up to Publix, that don't live up in that area to turn off one of the roads. Most of the people go through that. So I see Phoenix City growing on River Chase, rather than in a neighborhood. That's just, that's my opinion. And you brought up back across the street. I don't really want to get too much involved into that, but there's one developer that owns a majority unit. He has brought before the city before, trying to rezone that corner that is across the street. I don't know whether he withdrew it, or whether it didn't pass, or what, I don't know. But that has been brought up in the past. And if this particular piece of property goes in like that, I can promise it's not gonna be a maybe. It's gonna happen across the street. That's gonna be a larger development than what your development is. And it's not so much that your development doesn't deserve to be there. What you offer is fantastic. What you offer is life-giving. And it is well-deserved what you do. And absolutely, I want you to be successful in Phoenix City, because you wouldn't have people coming from Forts and in places like that to support you in this meeting, and the last meeting that I went to, that the Planning Commission held right here, and saw all those people. They had good testimonies for you. There is no question about that. It is different. It's just that a couple of things has been said. I just know that that's, there again, River Chase has been developed for that reason, for commercial. I live off of River Chase, but I live in a neighborhood that is just the backs of the houses come up to the road, not right through the middle of my street. And that's, I think that's what the most upsetting thing is in here, that Somerville Road runs right up there by his front yard. And if it changes, that's what it, it's nothing to do with your business, or you, or anything. You're gonna be a, I really believe you're gonna locate in Phoenix City, even if you locate there. I don't have a problem with it. So I really believe you're gonna locate in Phoenix City. You're gonna do well. People are gonna come find you no matter where you are. You can locate five blocks back, back off the main road somewhere. They're gonna come look you up. I promise you, they are. I just look at the Comprehensive Plan that y'all keep mentioning, and I just believe River Chase is where that is now, since 2014. You're talking about seven or eight years. And then I look at the possibility of later on development, and I know that's coming, if this happens. I really do. And I just, you know, I just have to say it that way. There's no other way for me to put that.
So can I address some of the things?
Sure you can.
Yes, ma'am.
So you say that you're gonna build out in another commercial facility. But that takes money. That increases my rent. This is a place that's affordable with some paint and some patches?
Well, I understand the theory, just like you said with your father. My father did the same thing with me. And I understand where he's coming from. He's able to help you get in a business and get established. And then when you do well, you can eventually take over the whole thing. And that's what my father allowed me to do. So I applaud your father for that, your mother for that, and you for that. And I don't blame you for wanting to do that. I really don't. I much, I own my own piece of property now because my father helped me. I did go out and rent a piece of property, pay somebody else to own a piece of property, let me take care of it. So I agree, you know, that that is the wisest thing to do. I am not disagreeing with you on that at all. I applaud your family for helping you. And you're gonna do so well that it won't be much help. They helped you get your foot in the door, but you don't keep going, you said. And you're gonna do everything, and you'll be successful.
So can I ask you a question about the Comprehensive Plan?
Sure.
If that's put on the website as what the city is making plans for future development, why are we against that?
I'm not, I wasn't speaking for the city. I'm speaking for myself, that River Chase is undeveloped down there, other than there are buildings and there are apartments down there. But that road was put in to take all the traffic, in my opinion, all the way out towards Publix, where you can get further out. Somerville Road was the main corridor. Even every Comprehensive Plan we've ever had, Broad Street to Somerville Road was the main way. And everything at one point in time merged right here at this intersection right here, from Isle Royale Drive, up Stadium Drive, and up Somerville Road, to go further out. So I can see back at that time, you would have anticipated Somerville Road to be the one that would grow. And it's gonna grow. It's gonna happen in somebody's lifetime. But I'm one of them sitting here that wants to see it come from Publix down as it grows, and from this traffic light up as it grows, not jump in the middle of something as it grows. And that's why I say the Comprehensive Plan, really and truly, in my opinion, should be looking at River Chase, which the whole River Chase can grow all the way up, without being in anybody's front yard or backyard, basically. And that's what I understand the bit. And I represent District One, and I just know the majority of the people that I've talked to that live in that area, that's been their concern. It's not what you do. I'm like the mayor. What, the first things that came out were all wrong, stated wrong, and should have never been said. You, your business is not a undesirable business. It most definitely is one that is needed. And I know you'd be centrally located through Jack Houston Hospital, and there's things, so I understand that. Because I remember you saying that when you were with the, you know, Planning Commission.
Yes, sir, because that's also in the Comprehensive Plan.
Right.
That on page 25, it says that professional medical offices should be concentrated in the vicinity of Jack Houston.
Right. But again, that's why I'm talking about River Chase.
But I'm just.
I know, but River Chase, yeah, it's on River Chase. And I understand. And I understand it's just right there. And it's not difficult to get there. It's just neighborhoods, so a lot of the people that live here, and I'm one of the older people now, I used to didn't leave, and I haven't, their neighborhoods. And you see them as neighborhoods all your entire life. And you don't really see them change. And I just know that you're not gonna change the neighborhood. You're not. And what you want to put there is not, would not be a change of neighborhood if that was the only thing that possibly could go there. But I can promise you, it's not. And that's where the issue comes in with me, is that it's not gonna stop back. And that's the difference that I see. It's nothing, absolutely nothing to do with what you want to put and where you want to put it all. But if it did not have that building next to it already, over the hardship case, I don't think you would have even picked that house. That's just me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I have two questions, one for Ms. Sherri, and one for the city. Ms. Sherri, what does your client base look like now? How many clients do you have, or just a rough number?
So what I've done, I would say I probably only have five or six right now, only because those were people that came to me when I was a student in massage school. And because I know them, I have gone to their homes and continued care if they requested it. But I have not been able to open my business to new people. I'm a female. I don't want to go into homes that I don't know. It's also COVID, being exposed to people that I'm not sure where they've been. So I am not able, and I've turned down people. I've had people reach out and request help with their children, or help with, you know, themselves, or a friend. And it's hard for me to say no. But at this time, I just, it's not doable.
So I see here, you have a sole proprietorship, and you've established your business since 2021, April. Do you own a business license within Phoenix City now? Is that this sole proprietor, you have a business license now?
When I talked to them, they said that I wouldn't need it till the end of the year.
Oh, end of the year, okay. City manager, just a quick question for the city, and just to help me understand. I know, and have heard the story about how the adjacent business got there. I don't recall how long it's been there. Can anyone answer that question?
Which business? You're talking about the insurance business?
Yes, sir.
The realtor company.
That was, the bridge was taken over, that corridor was put in place. The bridge was put there in 1986.
Thanks.
That was put there, it was a special exception. But what we need to understand here, and I'm trying not to get, I know the Burrell family, so I'm neutral. I don't have no vote here, anything else. I understand Comprehensive Plan. We have a planner here to understand the intent of what the Comprehensive Plan is. And when you get to the bridge, and you're looking at the mixed use from there to Pierce Road, you're looking at one type that was set up there, where you had commercial that was involved there years ago. Below the bridge is residential, going in the other direction, residential mixed use. So it all depends on, we changed councils every four years. Direction of the city changes. And everybody should understand that, and the beliefs of what the majority of the council is or so when you look at the Comprehensive Plan. Comprehensive Plan that was put in place, that was started in 212, that was voted on and put in place in 214, is there. You look at a Comprehensive Plan and a change of every, some people may change it every council. Some people look at it and agree with it from every seven to 10 years. It's changed, just like our riverfront development. That's why we have so much controversy on this particular matter, or which end of Somerville Road and the residence that's there, the way it faces. I live on Somerville Road. I live on 45th Street. And I know what talk was there years ago, and which way things was developed. But in working here for, this is my 36th year of being here, I've seen a lot of things happen, and a lot of things change. But they do change, and it changes according to the direction of which way the council is gonna agree for things to go at that particular time, or modify it. And like now, we have a 30-plus-year planner that has been looking over a lot of different things here. And I don't want to put that person on the spot or anything, because when it comes down to it, it's what this council has to listen to, and what people are addressing them with in the direction. And that's where my job modifies it, you know, and changes. But like I say, you all did a good research, and what you was looking at, and the way things changed there, and got great intent for those things to happen. But I said over here, I was trying to say all this, and want to be just quiet on it, to see which way things gonna go, because like I say, I don't, I don't.
I'd like to, for Sherri, no questions, I don't think. Because I was able to meet with Sherri and her mom, Ms. Connie, about a week ago. And I'm thankful that I got that opportunity. And I'm glad people tonight are getting this opportunity, because they get to see what your vision is. And I was, it opened my eyes. I didn't realize that. And no matter which way the vote goes tonight, I'm thankful that we have someone like you in our community. I'm thankful for the vision that you have. And I think it's extremely unique that you've taken your expertise as an occupational therapist, and a massage therapist, and found something that you really don't see much of anywhere. As a healthcare provider myself, and a small business owner, I want to see you succeed. And I also want to see you put back into this community, like me and you talked about when we met last week. This is difficult. It's a difficult situation. I'm born and raised in this community. One thing that I've learned as being on council is, we have to look at both sides, which is why I wanted to meet with you and your mom. We have to look at both sides, and it makes it extremely difficult when we see both sides. And we have to figure out, big picture, what we feel like is best for the city. And no matter what happens, I hope that you're able to continue to put back into our community, and be a staple in our community with your profession.
Thank you. Any others, any questions? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Ricky Thornton, 4021 28th Avenue, here in Phoenix City. I just have a question. Should she close, move at any point? Can, is it, can someone live in the house again after that, or is it gonna be commercial from then on?
Well, the decision hasn't been made, because the council hasn't had it on it.
Yes, yes.
But we, that's a hypothetical question. And, you know, we don't answer hypothetical questions.
Okay. So if, if a, anywhere, if a commercial, if there is a commercial property in a house where someone lived, and that house sold, then can someone live there as residential?
Whatever zone they give.
That's what I'm.
We'll call them our building. He could be more knowledgeable than we are, so.
If a commercial piece of property.
Again, if you come to the.
Yes. If you have a commercial piece of property that is a residence, if that property is sold, as long as it remains a residence, people can live there. Now, once it goes to a commercial entity, it can't go back to a residence.
Okay.
This piece of property, if it does get Zone C3, it cannot be a residence.
Thank you.
Can I answer your question?
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to come and pledge to counsel?
Brett Sanders.
And I want to thank you for addressing what I think I heard from Mr. Burrell at the beginning of this. I hadn't heard those words.
Yeah, I hadn't either, but it's a, this race, people doing that, and it needs to stop. This is one community.
Well, all I can say, wasn't me.
Yeah.
That did suck a lot in. But, and I'm agreeing with you.
Yes, sir.
There's, there's no place for that.
Yes, sir.
But I live in Magnolia Village subdivision, which is right across the street from the lot Mr. Burrell is trying to rezone. And, um, I am here to represent those people that live in the subdivision where I am, and I'm also representing the people in the neighborhood area that signed a petition that we got up about, um, being against rezoning this residential lot to commercial from the ne, that neighborhood area. And as y'all have already heard, of course, this, this area has pretty much been residential as long as I can remember. And, and of course Reverend Rob, he, uh, talked about the hardship of the real estate office, the only commercial lot north of the bridge until you get into Lee County, where there's one other one, this little stop, uh, shortstop convenience store. So there's only two commercial lots from the bridge all the way into Lee County. So that one lot is there next to Mr. Burrell's, the lot he's trying to rezone. And of course, we know about the hardship, and that's the only reason there. And that was not, when that hardship was given, that was not intended to change that area to residential. What I have heard from the people, I walked door to door within the neighborhood, the area there, and what I heard is clear from all the people that reside there is they do not want their residential area to change. They want it to stay residential like it's been, you know, from the sixties on. I mean, people, there are people there building houses sixties, seventies, going up, and it's been residential, they want it to stay residential. And I think Brother Rob might have even hit on something else I was going to say. Uh, no, that was Steve, I believe. Uh, when I'm getting old, what can I tell you? I, I can't, I'm sorry, I'm just. Oh, if that lot changes and goes to residential, I mean to conver, commercial, then that's going to open the Pandora's box for the residents that live in this neighborhood and this area. Because like Mr. Bailey said, there are developers that are just waiting for this to happen. And I can tell you for one hundred percent, all the people in that neighborhood in the area where, where we're talking about, they do not want a commercial business built next door to them, across the street from them, or up the street from them. I mean, we know what's happened in some other parts of, of town with the Dottle General and the, the tire place up on, uh, River Chase. You know, there's people in residential homes that now have to live right next to that. And the people in the neighborhood area that we're talking about do not want a business to be built next to them, across the street from them. And I'm one of those people, because this would be right across the street from where I live. Uh, there are a lot of elder.
Do you need some waters?
No, I'm okay.
Your mind, okay.
There's a lot of elderly people that still live in there, retired people, and, and I'm retired. But they're just, there are a lot of those people who wanted to ride out there in the last years, and I'm getting close to being in that group. You know, if, if it changes and goes commercial, and it's just a matter of time, the north side of the bridge will look like the south side of the bridge. Any business that's over on this side of the bridge that's out there now, if it's changed to C three, then those will be coming over to our side. And that's, we just don't want that. The people that live in the area do not want it. I went door to door, I talked to a lot of those people. And we're asking y'all to please just let us keep our residential area as it is. Ms. Sherry, I will give her some business. I'm at that stage, I need her, and I wish her all the best. But we're asking, you know, for the people that live in the area that clearly do not want this commercial lot to, to be approved. Any question?
Any question, council?
I have one, it's not for you, Mr. Sanders. Again, this is, uh, directed to the building official. So if the, uh, property at forty-one oh four was not, uh, did not touch C three, would it be eligible to be rezoned as it is now? If it was not contiguous?
It would not be eligible for rezoning.
It would not be eligible.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Sanders.
May, I'm sorry, can I go back and get Mr. Ricky Thornton's address? I might have missed.
Mr. Thornton, Ricky Thornton, which could, uh, you, uh, again, give her your address?
Four oh two one, Twenty-Eighth Avenue.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Name and address, please.
Jean Elda Whitaker. This is highly out of character for me.
Could you pull the mic closer to you?
Uh, yes, sir, thank you.
Okay.
This is really out of character for me. Um, we're forty-one oh two and forty-one hundred. We don't want it to go away yet. We've had those properties since, um, mid, mid forties, nineteen forties. We love the quiet. When the realty company came in, we knew that she was going to keep it quiet, and, and I love the people who bought the place, love them, they're precious. But I'm not quite ready to relinquish the quiet right there, right outside the bedroom door for whatever windows. Of course, it's going to happen one day. We're just buying a little bit of extra time, if that's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you get, uh, her, she needs her address?
I just, um, I have the forty-one oh two and forty.
Mostly, uh, as a therapist, but, uh, I, I wish her best of luck too, and, uh, and I, I believe that, uh, wanting to be commercial, and, and some other properties too, that people's waiting for. So if you open the door to that, uh, you know, I can't see how a council could turn anybody else's hands, so, um, I, we certainly, certainly would like to ask you on that, not make it commercial, we want to keep it, keep it, uh, residential there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question, council? Need your address, physical address, if you know.
Seventeen oh one Magnolia Place.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mel.
Thank you.
There anyone else? If there's not, I, I'm hoping, we almost made it.
Okay, I'm Walter Adams. I live across the street from this piece of property that we discussed it tonight. And, uh, first of all, I want to say thank you to the ones, uh, neighbors that came out and supported us tonight. I want to thank them for showing, showing up and coming out. And would it be appropriate if I asked to show our hands who lives in our neighborhood that showed up tonight, and who don't live in this neighborhood that's here? Is that inappropriate?
Right, yes, for the sake of, we did get the petition. It's, it's just trying to be respectful with us.
All right. You don't want with that. Anyway, I say thank you to our neighbors that showed up. But, uh, you know, the, uh, we're not here tonight about the issue about whether she's, this lady is good at what she does, uh, I'm sure she's good at what she does. The, the issue, hey, Andy, is, uh, is this place trying to, trying to go from residential to commercial, and, uh, that's what I got a problem with. And, uh, I hope, uh, that city council can see tonight by the number of people that showed up, all that's around the neighborhood, that they support, not, that this piece of property don't go commercial. I'm going to add one other thing, and, uh, I'm not one to talk a whole lot. Really kind of short, sometimes blunt, just old, you know, in a way.
We are who we are.
That's just the way it is, you know?
We are who we are.
Take me as I am, or leave me alone, you know? But whenever this came out, that, uh, this, this house is going to be Zoned Commercial, our little subdivision there, we got out and we went to work on this thing, because you know, we're trying to do all we can to stop it. Now, we got out and we walked the streets, me and my wife, Rex Sanders, the Thorntons, uh, Rex's mom, I think she had a part of it. But we got out and we walked the hills in the surrounding area, door to door, in the heat. We didn't go online and get no signatures, by the way. I've been told that, uh, there's been some signatures gotten, uh, a petition online, but, you know, you know, so what? We got out and walked door to door, and we got what, two hundred and ninety-two names that say, hey, we don't want this to be Zoned Commercial? And I think y'all got a copy, I think y'all got a copy of the names.
Yes, sir, we do.
And the phone numbers. Well, we, we spent two afternoons on the phone calling these people to try to get them to come to the meeting tonight. Well, a lot of them didn't come because why? Yeah, we got this COVID-nineteen thing going on out there, and you know what? Me and my wife and Rex, we were faced with that problem too, going door to door, but we didn't know whether they had COVID or not. But yet, we got out and we worked the streets trying to get these votes up. So we put the work in, and we also, uh, we got the following by putting the work in, because these people, they stand behind us on this. So I'm going to stand before you here tonight, and I'm asking, city council, I'm asking y'all not to rezone this commercial. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Give your address.
Oh, okay. Seventeen eleven Magnolia Place.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there anyone else? If not, I am declaring this public hearing closed. At this time, I do want to say this, I am very, speaking on behalf of the council myself, I'm very grateful that, uh, everyone stood up and said their piece, but I'm more excited that we did it in a decent and respectful way. And that says a lot about Phoenix City, and that's why I eluded what I eluded earlier. Uh, and I don't apologize for that. But I am so grateful that, uh, it was done decency, with decency and, and order. So I, I commend our community, which is you all and others for that, and I commend this council for intently listening to everyone. So with that said, the public hearing is closed, and at this time, uh, council, I am not going to ask the clerk to reread this ordinance due to the fact that it was done on August the seventeenth, but at this time, I am going to call for a motion.
I make a motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a second.
Second.
We have a second. We have the motion and the second. At this time, we'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Who denied? No.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all. Proceeding on now, council, on the conditional use, we have an application for conditional use approval submitted by Mike Bowden to use property located at five oh seven B Dillingham Street as an insurance agency. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Um, the letter is sent to September the fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one to Mayor and City Council members, conditional use of five oh seven B Dillingham Street, Mike Bowden owner. The Planning Commission of the City of Phoenix City met on Tuesday, September the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, to consider the request of Mike Bowden for conditional use of the property located at five oh seven B Dillingham Street. The applicant wishes to use the property as an insurance agency. It is the recommendation of the Planning Commission that this request for a conditional use be approved by the city council. Sincerely, Pat Howard, Chairman, Jimmy Douglas Foss, Chairman, Phoenix City Planning Commission.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lee. We've heard the reading of the resolution, and at this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
I'll motion, second.
All right, motion, Mr. Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gordy. Comments or questions, discussion? If not, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on now, council, on the license application. This is a second reading. We have not application for off-premise beer license and off-premise wine license submitted by Lunda Thompson for a Matter of Taste Corporation doing business as Neighborhood Food Mart located at thirty-nine eighty-four Sanford Road, Phoenix City, Alabama. I will not ask the clerk to reread it. The first reading was on September the eighth of this month. So with that said, uh, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Gordy, may I have a second?
A second.
Second, Mrs. Johnson. Okay. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Lo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, at this time, we'd like to turn it over to our attorney, Mr. Jimmy Graham.
Mayor and council, we have three claims on the agenda today. Um, the first one being filed by Udonis Thomas. Uh, Mr. Thomas was, um, driving on. Mr. Thomas was driving on Seal Road between the car wash and Mother Mary's Mission. We had a, as the paperwork says, we had made a cut and we had put a temporary fuel in it. And the weather had washed it out and the Thomas vehicle struck it and damaged the right tire. He submitted three estimates as we require, the lowest being two hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-one cent to BMW Montgomery. And I recommend that we approve this claim for that amount.
All right, thank you, Mr. Graham. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve recommendation.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Daye, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gordy. Okay, call the vote, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Loeb.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next claim is filed by Lucy Patterson Jones. We, it's where Liam struck her vehicle that fell off of a gravel truck. Mr. Bailey had some questions, wanted to know some additional facts and we were originally going to table it to the next meeting, but I got a fact from Chief Smith this morning. He talked to the officer. Our vehicle was off of the road on the right of way. And he said that Ms. Jones was making a legal pass. It was just one of those unfortunate things where, you know, it slipped and hurt her vehicle. She had submitted three claims, the cheapest being three thousand five ninety-six sixty-three. And I recommend that we approve this claim in that amount.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Counsel, we've heard the due diligence and the recommendation of the attorney, which we did, struck him to do the due diligence. He's done that. So we've heard his recommendation. So at this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by councilman Gordy, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Daye. Okay, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Loeb.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, the next claim is filed by Terry Shade. She was on the last meeting agenda and we asked that y'all table it till tonight. In the interim, myself, Mr. John Spragons, Mr. Charles Woody and Mr. Gil Griffith went out, met with Ms. Shade, looked at the house. Mr. Griffith feels like, I mean, we're at fault. There's no doubt about that. But he thought some of the estimates were high. The total estimate was seven thousand one thirty fifty-nine. He made some deductions based on what he saw. And my recommendation is to approve the claim in the amount of five thousand seven hundred nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Graham. Counsel, we've heard the recommendation from our attorney. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Johnson and a session by Mr. Daye. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Loeb.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council, that's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. And council, now proceeding under city manager. We have two resolutions. The first one being a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to accept a proposal from Proshot Concrete Incorporated for emergency work to repair and reopen the road along River Oakway and Fortieth Street in an amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas the corrugated metal pipes along River Oakway and Fortieth Street has failed and requires emergency work to repair and reopen the road. And whereas Proshot Concrete Incorporated provides a cost-efficient alternative in concrete pipe rehabilitation compared to a total pipe replacement. And whereas Proshot Concrete Incorporated has submitted a proposal for this required emergency work. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, accepts the proposal submitted by Proshot Concrete Incorporated in the amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Passed through and adopted this twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Counsel, we have all heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Mr. Daye, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Gordy. Comments or discussion? All right. Not, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Loeb.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, council, on the city manager, is a resolution in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and the city manager to sign an agreement with ALDOT for the bridge replacement on Seal Road over Coca-Liche Creek, VIN number zero zero four two nine one, project number STPPC dash five seven one seven. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Phoenix City is desirous of constructing or improving by contract a section of road included in the Phoenix City road system and described as follows. Bridge replacement on Seal Road over Coca-Liche Creek, VIN number zero zero four two nine one, project number STPPC five seven one seven, CPMS reference number one zero 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 six seven four four eight and CPMS reference number one zero 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 six seven four four nine. And whereas the city agrees to all the provisions of any agreement which has been executed or will be executed covering the construction of the project. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes filling of initial documents with the Alabama Department of Transportation authorizes and directs its mayor and city manager to sign necessary documents in connection with the above project and to provide such additional information to ALDOT as may be required. Passed through and adopted this twenty-first day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lee. Counsel, we have heard the resolution, the reading of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Daye, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Daye. Comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Daye.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy.
Yes.
Mayor Loeb.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Thank you all for coming. At this time, our department head would certainly like to thank you all so much for what you do. Making sure that we're keeping our hearts in what we're doing for this year. And thank you so much. Counsel, is there anyone that would like to say something? Before I alluded to the city manager? Anything, counsel?
Do you ever need to have turnout like this more often?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons.
You need to see the government work. Whether it works in your favor or not, in your favor, the way you see it, it still works. And it works equally for everybody. And it works legally for everybody. And it works to where everybody can understand what goes on. It's transparent. It's open. And it's out there for people to see. And people ought to take more advantage of knowing how it works. And trust needs to come back to government again, rather than everything we see on TV where there's no trust in your government. You need to know that it is. And it's not just because you come out on a yes side or a no side. It's because you come out as an American, which we stand up to believe in what we believe in. And our government's based to do what we think is right for everybody and the majority. But watch out for the individual person to make sure it's done correctly. And that's what we, you know, that's what we try to do and we do regularly. And a lot of times, we don't get the benefit of people realizing that we do everything on our own. And we do everything, or try to, and I know that I do personally and I know everybody else up there speak for. We're consistent. And we have to do it that way and we have to be that way. So I commend all of you for being here tonight. I thank you for being here. I represent District One, so I represent the majority of the people in this room tonight. I do appreciate that. But I do wish you could come to more meetings. And we do have, this meeting should have been scheduled for down in District Three.
That's right.
On the Fifth Avenue, excuse me, Fifth Place South. So appreciate Mr. Daye allowing this meeting to be up here tonight to make it convenient for those of y'all who wanted to show up. I know you still drove to the other end, down south, and that's fine. But it made it more convenient. They moved to a six o'clock. That made it more convenient. And we didn't zoom and that made it more convenient. So we tried to do everything to be fair with everybody. And I hope that everybody got their say and that everybody was able to, you know, interject what they wanted everybody to hear. And I hope that you did. And I hope everybody would come back to these meetings on the mornings when we have them. We may be zooming for a while because of this COVID. But when we go back to meeting, please come. Please come. There's no reason not to. Love to have you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Anyone else?
Now, I'd concur with Councilman Bailey had already elaborated on. I wonder the thing that I like to say hats off to Todd and his crew or the art festival over there. And I had the opportunity to visit and I was surprised that none of the folks that attended enjoyed the music, what have you. The reason I say I was surprised because we were at all the different football games in the Buss City area throughout this area. A lot of folks went to that as well. But we had a real good turnout over there and the food was good. I had the opportunity to eat ice cream, what have you, to talk to some of the citizens over there. I think they really enjoyed it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Daye. Anyone else? Mr. Honey, anything you want to add or take away?
We need to make some announcements of what's, some of this going on in the city.
Put the mic down for him. I ain't saying nothing. I ain't doing that.
I just want, we talked about it yesterday. I know that we've had lots of citizens complaining about limbs and debris not being picked up on the regular scheduled days. Public Works has been hit hard during this pandemic. We don't, we're very short-staffed. We don't have a lot of people working. The people that are on staff, you know, they could be out due to illness, they could be out due to sickness. And we have a lot of equipment, you know, and we're using the equipment hard and some of that has gone down. And it's taken us a long time to get that equipment back up because parts are backordered now because of the pandemic. So we just really would appreciate the citizens if they could just be respectful and understand that we're trying to do the best that we can do. We've got people out there in pickup trucks trying to go and pick up limbs and debris, you know. So we are trying. We know it's not the service that they normally get. We hate that, but it has hit us hard and we do strive to get that quality of service back up. But we encourage anyone that needs a job, you know, to please go down to our human resources department and apply for a job. I mean, I can say the past few months, we may have had a handful of applications that's come in and maybe one or two of those we interviewed thought they were going to take the job and they just decided they weren't going to take the job. So it has been a very real struggle, especially for all the field crews out there. The guys that are out there, they're doing great. They are working so hard. I'm very thankful for them. You know, they do the city a good job and I really appreciate them. And I don't think they get the recognition sometimes that they need. But, you know, we've got lots of utility cuts that still have gravel in it. Unfortunately, asphalt trucks have gone down. We don't have a lot of people in our asphalt crew working right now. So we're doing our best that we can to go in and put gravel back in the holes. So hopefully this is just going to be for a few, I don't know how much longer it's going to be, but just know, citizens, that we're trying. Please be, you know, patient with us. You know, if you can't call in, you know, we'll take your call. Right now, our main priority, we've got to protect infrastructure. If a sinkhole happens, that's going to be our first priority. That's going to be over an asphalt lift, you know. We've got to protect the infrastructure and then, you know, maybe we can go cut the grass in the ditch. So we are struggling. We have a lot of, a lot of miles of grass that we have to mow and we have to prioritize it. So I just wanted to mention that. I do have some good news. We were just awarded our RAA rebuild Alabama Act grant that we applied for, for Dobbs Drive. So we were awarded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project. So of course, it's not going to cover all of it, but that additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is pretty nice. Yes, so we are happy about that. So like I said, we are all still working very hard. But, you know, if everyone can just be patient with us, we've had a lot of road closures. I know River Oakway, I appreciate y'all voting on that. Well, contractor plans on being out there tomorrow. Fortieth Street, we're going to have to close the road one lane. That's going to be some traffic concerns. They plan on doing that tomorrow after school starts. But, you know, unfortunately, it's one of those things we've got to get taken care of because we don't even want anyone to get hurt. So we appreciate everybody working with us, appreciate the citizens being patient and we're going to strive to do the best job that we can with what we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore, I'd like to say this, I was very jealous and I'm glad to say what you said on camera. Yesterday alone, I received four calls about the same thing that you just spoke about. I hope officers to be patient with us and be aware of this, watching this council meeting tonight. And, you know, just be patient with us, as you stated. And when I receive those calls, I also tell them that we are behind schedule. Charlotte, these are the things that I do tell these folks. And I just hope they be patient with us.
Right, we're not behind schedule because we want to be. It's just unfortunate circumstances that it is.
Yes, ma'am, yes. Thank you, Ms. Moore. Thank you. Mr. Honey?
What Ms. Moore is talking about is if you're watching the news, this is going on throughout the United States. I never thought I would see a time where people didn't want to work. And it's become a crisis. We've done very well, as I informed y'all, for the first year plus in this situation. And now it's beginning to affect us. And, but like, as I can say, we have a lot of department heads and people that have a lot of lawyer and dedicated services that's sticking in here through this COVID nineteen and the things we're doing. But I want to speak on something and just kind of disturbing, to be honest with you. One thing you don't want to see in our community is spirits broken. And I feel a tension tonight. And even though we're looking out for the welfare of the city, I know people need to understand the corridor of Sunville Road. It was addressed through comprehensive plans dealing with. Lee County is a lot of Sunville Road. The gentleman alluded to that earlier, which is a part. And people got to understand that even when you cross over in the property, if we have a certain amount of say-so and not, once you get over with the development for Bruce Wayne, the deal that we had to do with Publix when they came in place. There's a lot of things that I wish more people would attend so they could hear some of these things as we conduct business throughout the year, as things go on and see what's happening in our city. Because with our new planner and what we have a planner and what I was going to say, we have a planner, Ms. Hadaway and Sean in economic development. And I hope they would do everything they possibly can to help out with this situation and find in a suitable location, if we can do that and get involved in that. Do everything that y'all can to help this because this is something, when you look at this hard sleep on, you know, and you want to help people and you don't want to break spirits of young people. Two o'clock this morning, I was up watching TV, watching an old familiar show from when I was a kid called Peyton Place. And we all remember what happened in Peyton Place, if you know anything about it. So, and having some type of committee with our seniors and with our young people to sit down and talk and conduct. Because what Ms. Elder said was also a good point, where she was looking at buying time to have that. Because it's quiet there at the same time. You look and you get mixed feelings in this situation and it's tough. This, this probably in the thirteen years I've been city manager, this probably something this past month or so, with this one situation, it's been one hard touching situation and looking at this. Because we want, we want our community to still thrive and people like and love one another and talk to one another. But some of the things got out and I could see everybody's point and everybody's point of view. And it does put a strain on people. And that's just like me, I don't want to talk too much because I'm putting a strain on my personnel. They're raising families and they have kids and it's late in the day right now. But I appreciate everybody that came. I appreciate the council. I know it's a tough decision that you all have to look forward and we have several more tough decisions. And things will, like I always tell people, that face the reality of government and government changes in this city every four years. This particular one, if it's something for, and I try to put this information with what they had changes as far as change in the election cycle. This particular council has been placed in five years. And that was signed in order and law by the governor. So we do have a lot of good work that we can do, but I wish that we all could work together even more. And like I say, some of the committees that will be put together so people can have the understanding. And a lot of the seniors can teach people the history that when Lee County started at fourteen at Fourteenth Street, where the courthouse is at. And a lot of people don't realize that, how far and how Phoenix City evolved and going to a certain point. So I wish everybody would work together diligently and try to get us, keep us moving forward during this pandemic. It's really tough on us right now. So please have patience and understanding, and I hope everybody would pray for what occurred tonight to make sure it's still encouraging and don't break in spirits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Honey. And again, I just want to say thank you all for coming out. I will say this, there's always defining moments in our lives individually as well as collectively, and this is a defining moment for this community collectively. And what I am the proudest of, and I speak on behalf of this council, as I stated earlier, we did, we did it the correct way with decency, and it was done in order, and I personally, as well as this council, want to commend you all on that. But as I always say, this is a time where we can build each other up. It's important that we care about each other and that we love each other. We're not going to always agree. I've, and I say this, and I hope this not, you know, people don't take it in the wrong